Agents to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Alanson is absent. Vice Mayor Baylor?
Here.
Kathy Sherman?
Here.
Jeff Gard?
Here.
Melina Meyer?
Here.
Ann Schaefer?
Here.
Kristen Carpenter?
Here.
Ken Jones?
Here.
The quorum council.
The agenda is before you. Motion first.
Motion second. I have an amendment.
Okay.
Or I guess I can do it at the consent count, I'm very...
Okay.
Either one.
Alright, so the regular agenda is before you. Are there any changes, additions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We got disclosure conflict of interest. Nothing there.
Can I ask if people could speak into the microphone?
Wait just a second, am I on?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now, Kristen?
A little bit better, yeah, thank you.
I think he's gonna work on it.
Can you turn Tom up seven?
I'm retired. Okay, now I lost my place here. Where we at? Communications by fisherman visitors. Yes, pardon me?
Did we do disclosure conflict?
We did. Okay, audience comments regarding agenda items. Anybody in the audience, three minutes each. Please give your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Hein Krutoff. I live at lot 41, Sommel Bay Road. I'm the owner of Dutch Marine Industries. And I would like to speak in favor of agenda item number five regarding Dutch...
For those on the phone, did you give your... I don't think they caught your name and address, the speed wasn't working.
My name's Hein Krutoff. I live at lot 41, Sommel Bay Road. I'm the owner of Dutch Marine Industries. And I wanted to speak in favor of agenda item number five regarding Dutch Marine Industries lease in the shipyard. Our reason for wanting a lease is we currently work symbiotically with the harbor department and the haul-out, blocking the majority of the boats that get halted here. Which requires us to have a decent amount of equipment and supplies readily available at all times. For example, our storage commaxes, boat stands, keel blocks, and our large forklift and other equipment for moving things around from boat to boat. These items are currently stored in multiple places around the shipyard, which is inconvenient and often needs to be moved around to accommodate the harbor department's work down there. Having all the equipment and commaxes in one location makes more sense regarding space usage and financially as well. We are currently paying month by month, by the foot, at the boat rate price for each of our commaxes and each piece of equipment and trailer that stays in the yard at all times of the year. As far as the building we're planning goes, the community is currently in great need for a building large enough to accommodate same boats and provide a proper space for doing the boat projects that are being requested of us. Many of which simply cannot be done under a makeshift shelter. As a fiberglass business, we require a climate-controlled environment and having a real building would greatly expand the services that we can provide for the community. As well as increase productivity on these projects, allowing us to turn boats around faster, generating more haul-out revenue for the city. Not long ago, the newspaper did an article about how big the business is booming in the Homer Shipyard. And I have no doubt that Cordova can provide the same services here if a building was available. We currently have hundreds of commercial fishing boats that permanently mourn Cordova and they all need the kind of regular servicing that we provide. We do not currently have specific building plans. The wind and snow loading require a very strong structure to meet those standards and we are still researching all of our options. Also, the boat trailer that the harbor commission is currently looking to purchase is a huge variable in our shop choice because it would greatly change the size of shop needed to accommodate the haul-out versus a trailer. We will be submitting detailed building plans and specs beyond what we've already provided once we have more information. But just to reiterate, we have no intentions on trying to put up something that won't withstand our harsh conditions. We look forward to working with the city and continuing to expand the services we can provide for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, see none. Chairpersons and boards, commissions. Do we have anybody for CCM, CA? I don't know. School board? And the student council? Okay, that brings us to the consent calendar.
I'd like to pull item five.
Okay, item five would be pulled. Is there anybody else? Okay. Let's put item five where we want to put that.
It's under resolutions L?
What's that?
L-15A.
Fifteen A. Okay, so we'll move that down to fifteen A. That's under correspondence, or you think?
No, under L. L's a resolution.
Okay. Okay, and the rest of the consent calendar, roll call please.
Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
Yes.
Tom Baylor?
Yes.
Jeff Gard?
Yes.
Melina Meyer?
Yes.
Kristen Carpenter?
Yes.
We don't have any bids. Of course, I'll offer. I don't think the mayor has a report, so let's go to the city manager's report.
I don't have a written report in a packet, but I do have a verbal update on some things that have been going on since our last council meeting. In the area of finance, next week, we have two folks coming to town. One of whom is an expert in Casell, which is our software system for our financial accounting. And one of the things we've realized is that our team is not comfortable with the software. So next week, this individual will be here for five days and spending a lot of in-depth time bringing our team up to speed on the use of Casell and using it effectively so that we can all get the reports we need. And secondly, an individual who potentially could be a finance director. He's a CPA, worked with KPMG and other big firms, was finance director of Bethel a number of years ago, understands government accounting. He's retired, is interested in doing a bit more work. So he'll be onsite next week and we'll have some serious conversations about how we want to move forward with him or not. So that's all good news. Budgets are in progress. We're using a new software, government software, that allows us to track things in real time and makes it easier to do the budget process. So instead of using Excel spreadsheets, we actually can use a dynamic program that allows our department has to input data and I can communicate it and respond immediately. So that's a really cool thing we're trying out this year. And the best thing is you push a button at the end and a budget book is published. It goes on. That to me is well worth it. So we'll see how this all goes. And then probably the most exciting thing is the harbor. This week, we did have a bunch of contractors in town to get an overview of the RFP. And I want to turn it over to Sam to give a bit of an update about where we stand and how things are proceeding. The bond has been funded. We have just under $5 million in the bank. And I think the team is ready to spend it when the contract is let. So Sam, why don't you update?
We had a pre-proposal meeting. So it's teams, so it was about four teams that came to do a tour of the harbor. And then we sat here, actually, and answered questions when it was some of the RFP. They're all pretty, they're all big players, Seattle, Anchorage, very interested. We had good discussion. Seems like they're gonna do good. So that was really good. Just getting the RFP out the door was amazing. So yeah, we look forward to it. It closes November 4th, which is a Friday. We will review and score proposals individually. And then we will have Kim Nielsen, who is our waterfront engineer, marine engineer, probably come in at the end of the week and Mark will come up and we will finish that. And probably have to ask you guys for a special meeting to do the contract just to keep moving forward, not wait for a second council meeting. So that's kind of the update. Just keep moving on the grant agreements. The environmental's very close. We just kind of with that last final push from our hand, we got a solid confirmed pile count, which is very crucial to the environmental work because that's noisy and animals are affected by that. So that was important. And yeah, we're just, we're getting some requests from Morad, which makes me feel good that they're up to us or where we are in line is now high. And so that's good as well. If anybody has some questions?
I have one thing I want to say is that we have an amazing team working on this harbor project. They may not have had experience doing these big projects, but Sam has been totally a rock star with getting this RFP together and learning how this all goes forward. And Tony as well has been very involved in this project, kind of getting this off the ground. It just would not have happened without those two. So I want to applaud them in every way.
Just a question to the manager. I think we did change, but we're not locked into taking the lowest bid on these projects anymore.
Yeah, this particular RFP, Sam, you wanted to identify it's a 60/40, I think.
So, well, whenever you do a request for proposals, you are not required to take the lowest bid. The part of, the thing about request for proposals is you're looking for the best proposal, technical skills and things like that. And that's just generally, but Morad requires more emphasis on the technical skills than the price in their rules. And also just typically in a design build, you look at that, you know, who's going to give you the best design and how their skills are there. So if they've only been in business for two months and their lowest bidder or their proposal's lower, you don't have to accept it just because it's the lowest.
You might mention, but then who's going to help you evaluate those bids?
So it'll be Tony, Colin.
Colin is?
Colin Bronson has been hired to be the project manager on the ground because remember Mark is gonna not travel all the time here. So they will be working very extensively. Him, Tony, and Colin will be on the ground. I'll be doing a lot of the grant side of it, the paperwork. I'm gonna put some paper. And then...
Well, Mark as well will look at the...
Yeah, Mark will come up. So Kim Nielsen is the engineer from R&amp;M, who is a marine engineer. Lots of experience in Alaska, very well respected. She will be here, Mark will be here, and then the Cordova team will be here. And then we'll bring that contract to city council.
Again, that was more for the benefit of the public. We are having, I don't think we expect you and Tony to have the expertise to do something like that.
I don't want that responsibility. So yeah.
Thank you. Is there anything else? City manager, questions for the city manager? Okay. Does the assistant clerk have anything to speak to?
They're finishing up the digitizing the property cards so that most of those are done. And that'll be a good thing for me when we get that finished.
Is there a timeframe on that?
I think they're gonna come down here the first part of November.
They're gonna be done in December, or is this gonna be...
I hope it's eaten real smooth. We'll see.
Okay, correspondence? Any comments on correspondence back? Okay, see none. Remember the back item?
Vice Mayor?
Whoop, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna just say to the next item, sorry.
Okay, we'll move on to... Item number five.
I would like to, yeah, I'd like to move to approve resolution 10-22-27.
Okay, we'll move back a bit. Yeah, Kristen, go ahead, you want to speak?
Thanks. Yeah, thank you. So I do, I support this. I think obviously this is an effort to meet a business need in town, which is terrific. And my big concern is just, oops, because, well, anyway. My big concern is stormwater runoff and containment of potential pollutants at the site. And I know, and I guess I say that because there's lots of other boat activity down there where, you know, there's bottoming being applied and there's five gallon buckets of oil and other solvents. And I know we, there's a, I think it's supposed to be an oiling grid separator or some kind of a stormwater filter over by the boat lift. But I think there's probably a lot of stormwater runoff that all goes straight into the ocean. And I just want to make sure that there's some kind of provisions for making sure that we have containment, that the tenant has containment mechanisms in place. And I see that the lease mentions, has a really comprehensive list of all the environmental laws that apply, and that's great, I appreciate that. And I don't know, you know, I know this is good for an attorney and maybe it's not appropriate to add this into the lease, but I'd like to just make sure that there's some kind of stormwater, that the city is monitoring the stormwater containment best practices, something like that on the site. I don't know if there's the possibility of asking for a drainage plan or some kind of a stormwater containment plan, but that's my concern. And I, like I said, I support the business 100% and I just want to see stormwater done off best practices in place for the site. And for all the activities that go down there, that really goes for everything. I know that we haven't talked about it that much, or at all that I know of, for the shipyard, but it really goes for all of them. Thank you.
Okay, well, let's address that point, maybe. Or you came to the table with...
Yeah, you know, I was just kind of... Yeah, Kevin Johnson, city planner, just letting you know that that's actually covered on, if you look at packet page six, it's item five A1 of the lease. And it requires that the tenant utilize and maintain a method of containment approved by the city to properly contain spills and prevent ground penetration and so on and things like that. So when they submit their building plans, as part of the building plans, they'll be required to show how they're going to be containing hazardous materials and then, you know, dispose of them responsibly.
Does that address your concern, Kristen?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that somebody was, that there was some way for the city to, yes, monitor and enforce that section of the lease. So thank you.
Okay, were you gonna comment on this? So sticking with, I'm sorry, sticking with what you just, that would be my point is, can or will the city monitor it? Because you can put the best systems in the world, required on paper, but if it isn't properly installed and maintained, it doesn't do any good. And then does the city have the legal right to come in? And I'm, this is no, I'm talking bad of the applicant here, because this building may be sold to somebody else. Do they have the right to come in and go, I want to check your system? Is it working? Do we have that domestic plan or do we have that authority?
Yeah, in the lease, we have inspection authority. So we'd be able to come in and check the systems if we needed or if there was, you know, a reason to.
Okay. Well, I'm all about reason to. I think it's just, to me, it should be like a yearly inspection because the reason to might be too late.
Yeah, I mean, that's not specifically written into the lease. You know, that's something that can be potentially added or just done as a policy item. That's just something that we do. We have to figure out how we're going to do that, though. You know, we need someone that's an expert in understanding that sort of thing. So we probably have to hire and bring someone in once a year to do some sort of inspection like that. I mean, I don't know what it would consist of, so.
Yeah, since I don't know what the device looks like, I wouldn't know what to look at.
Yeah.
Confer, Carpenter, have you got any thoughts on that?
I was just thinking that we, that the city, and I'm happy to contribute that help, but we'd want to probably, and maybe Kevin's already done that, some research on kind of what our current best practices used in other shipyards around the country. You know, I'm sure other people have, other places have run into this or have tried to address this issue. And I'm sure there are models out there that we could look at and figure out. Or should we be, what should we be expecting from a tenant? And what should we be looking for when somebody does go to take a look at it?
Right. Councilman, whoop, the city manager, councilman Gard, who wants to go first?
I just wanted to address that, too. There is a program, harbors and shipyards are eligible to apply for. And it basically credits you as a clean harbor. And that's something that we will be going after. And that clean harbor designation impacts all of our boats and anything that we do in our watershed that the city is responsible for, the port and harbor. So assuming that we do that, there will be best practice that will be in play because it's mandated by the designation.
Councilman Gard?
I'm all in favor of making sure that we...
I'm sorry, I don't think you're out yet, just a minute.
Hey, can you turn his mic up?
Is that better?
No.
Here.
Okay, I am all in favor of making sure that we do everything properly and above board. But I don't want to see us, it seems like we're kind of trying to put all the emphasis on one tenant. Every boat we haul down there, that rents space down there is a tenant. If we're gonna put a policy up like this, we need to not do it in kind of a shotgun fashion when something, one thing comes up. We want to do something like this to make sure that we're controlling pollutants, which we have a great chance happening for marine industry stuff. We need to sit down and get a plan for doing it instead of just trying to force it all off on one spot. Thank you.
And that clean harbor designation program is all about what you guys are discussing. We don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Any more comments online?
Yeah, I've got some comments. So as far as this environmental concern, I think it's important to point out that moving this type of activity into a building is gonna help the environmental impact down at Shipyard. Fiberglass dust in the atmosphere blowing around is kind of a current paradigm and this is gonna contain a lot of that work into a building. I think that should be celebrated. Also, the storm water, stormwater runoff, you know, it's gonna keep the rain from hitting these boats that are being worked on. And it's actually gonna reduce the amount of stormwater runoff because it's gonna hit the roof of the building, it's gonna go up the ease. It's not gonna reveal where the pollutants are. So I can understand council member Carpenter's concern, but I just wanted to make sure that was on the record. And I think that this should be celebrated as a way to reduce our environmental impact. Also, a lot of this work currently is conducted on these haul-out grids where people are pressure washing and the copper base running right into the harbor. So having the haul-out being utilized more, having buildings being utilized is gonna help our environmental impact as an industry. And I don't want to see us get too far down in the weeds on that and make it to where this project might not be feasible, requiring hundreds of thousands of dollars of certain equipment and filters and stuff when this is a step in the right direction, regardless if we have that or not. Also, I think that our harbor staff, if they're already operating the lift pads for everything and doing its service, they have more than competence to do the annual walkthrough. I don't think we need to be spending more than the leases bringing in professional inspectors.
Okay, thank you. Melina, do you have any comment?
Yeah, I have a couple comments. I also agree that I'm very much in favor of this project. I think it's a good location for it. I think getting it under a roof, like Kenny said, was, is a good direction to go down. I do have a, I guess, a little bit of concerns about being, the city being landlords over a physical building. And questions about how the base rent was calculated. Just looking at it, $260 a year, I mean, $260 a month doesn't seem like very much of a base rent, especially if we're talking about doing inspections possibly or, I don't know. I kind of just see it as a liability of the city and I don't see that as very much rent. I'm curious how that base rent was come up with.
Okay, I think there's a calculation for that. Will the city manager respond to that?
I'm referring to Kevin.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kevin.
So most of the land disposals that we do are usually for, you know, selling the property outright. You know, we have the lease with options of purchase, but still at the end of the day, they're paying for the whole property. We don't have a ton of leases that are for strictly just renting space, like renting our land, leasing our land. So I look at what we've done with the couple that we do have. Most of them are like with the Coast Guard and a couple other entities. And how those are structured is we've taken the assessed, tax assessed value of the property and then charged 10% of what the assessed value is. So for this, we calculated the... So for this, we took the assessed value, the square footage of the lot as a whole, and then broke that down to the square foot price, then, you know, multiplied that by the number of square feet that they are requesting the lease and then did 10% of that. So just to stay consistent with how all the other leases have been done.
Yeah, because I know the airport lease in town, there's one for much more than that just for leased properties. That was interesting to me, too.
Yeah, I believe those are state leases, right? Yeah. And like I said, I just was going off of the precedent that we had set already to, you know, not be unfair to how we've done it in the past.
Any other questions online?
I guess...
Go ahead.
Could I comment based off that?
Sure.
So I guess I'm looking at it as a 10-year lease that we're gonna be approving. And so that is, you know, just about $30,000 for kind of a prime piece of property for 10 years. And these other entities that you're talking about is kind of governmental entities, the state and Coast Guard. I think a private business is kind of a different level. I, you know, when we sell property under assessed value, it's under a lot of consideration with kind of a lot of backup to go with it. And I, I don't feel comfortable approving a lease at this time for that amount without knowing more information. Or I don't know what other more information I need. I am in favor of this project, but, you know, maybe we should advertise it. We're kind of giving away property for businesses like this if that's what we intend... If that's what we intend to do, then maybe we should have kind of a plan for that, because we won't, I don't believe there's not property tax on top of that. We're talking about a physical building being built there. So, those are kind of my concerns.
So, I've got a question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'm kind of segwaying off Councilmember Meyer's comments. At first, I too was like, well, that seems pretty low. Then I started thinking about, well, you know, 100 by 100 foot chunk of land we're not leasing in the building, they saw the building, $700,000 building, and I was curious if that building would be taxable, and I think it would be, but that would be a question I would have for staff. Will we get property tax under the improvements?
Uh, go ahead, City Manager.
I'm going to defer to Tina.
Yeah, yeah, the state leases are like that. Their buildings are taxed, it's just the land, you know, is a possessory interest, but the building is taxed.
I guess, so thank you for answering that question. Then a further point that I would like to make is the fact that I would like to see us address in this lease that the harbor department gets the revenue from this lease, or the harbor department is the one giving out rentable land for this. And also, another point would be that this is going to increase the amount of use for our travel with, and our travel with trailer, it will increase in some form, the city's billables, or the harbor department's billables down there for travel of use. And so, I think that irregardless of the actual price in lease, this is going to be a benefit to the city in more ways than just the dollar amount associated with this lease. So, I just wanted to bring those up. I do hope that we can address the whole where this revenue is going to go thing, and yeah, I'll give it.
Okay. Any more comments online before I go to the table? Okay, Councilman Guard?
Yeah, this is Malina.
Let me come back to you first.
It's okay.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Malina.
Oh, I was going to move to refer this back to staff so that they can make some changes of saying the property and talking about the property improvements from the tenant and possibly some language in there, talking about oversight from the harbor condition and the harbor in general for maintaining it. And also, maybe you could also put in there about the money going to the harbor. I don't have a problem with that. I think it is very much a harbor use. They have harbor staff, they will be doing some inspections, looking at it, and having this under their eyes.
Okay, I think that as far as where the money goes, I think that's locked in statute.
Code, yeah.
Code, and I'll have the manager address that, and then I think there's possibly some more discussion on this, and then if you, I would suggest if you feel like it still should go back to staff with more ideas and suggestions, then you could make that motion. Would that be all right with you?
That would be fine, or someone could second it, make some discussion about referring it back to staff, either one, but right now it doesn't have a second, so, either way.
Okay, a second anywhere? Okay, can the city manager address the lease money? We're getting off a little bit here, but...
Actually, I can't.
Okay, but it isn't.
I can get more information and respond, and if you guys want to have us do a little bit more research and bring it back to the next meeting, that's certainly something we can do, but I'm not able to answer all of your questions right now.
Okay. Just to add one thing, I also am not sure that it's actually appropriate to put some of this stuff in the lease, because it seems like internal housekeeping items, where this is a lease between UDS and their use of the property. And I don't know if we need to be mixing in like where we're putting money, whose responsibility, like which department is responsible, which I think...
Right, we're just, we're getting off a little bit, but it's, it's a, I don't think this was going to go on the lease, it's just they wanted to know where the money was going, so we're kind of getting off the track there, but we'll get back on here. Any more discussion at table? Yes?
Councilmember Sherman, so, just listening to the testimony from our proposers at the beginning of the meeting and everything that we've learned so far, I'm okay with this lease. I think it sounds like there's a lot of flux in what might happen down there, and I want to know more what the harbor is going to, are we looking at a bigger haul-out trailer? Anyway, because that's what I just heard, and I was wondering about that. So, it seems to me like there's a lot of flux. It's just a great business that we all know we need. I think we're addressing some of the environmental uses. I think they really don't know what this is going to cost, so that's why there's a performance condition in there, and as the lease stands right now, I'm okay with letting it go forward and let staff continue to deal with any minute you have it in housekeeping, whatever. And I don't think we should be nitpicking this to death at this point in time when it's a good business that we all know we need.
Thank you. Andy, have any comments?
Well, I'm in favor. I'm, yeah, I'm okay with the lease as it is, and yeah, I'm in favor.
Okay, so I have just one point, and this can be handled by the city manager in negotiations moving forward, but in there, there's talk about the, we see we'll be responsible, there's snow on their property, but it's not only the snow on their property, but the snow that goes off of their property, whether it sheds or it gets moved out. We have had little issues with it down there with people putting snow on other people's property or on the city property, the city, that's something that the city manager can be addressed to, or the city manager. The other thing I think the city manager can address is, before this lease is executed, I'd like to see that the applicant shows financial ability to do this project, and that doesn't have to be public consumption, that can be, in my opinion, between the applicant and the city manager, but we're probably talking a three-quarter million dollar project here. Before we tie up land for any amount of time, I want to make sure that that viable ability to do that project is there, because we have had incidents in the past in the community that people have purchased land and it didn't move forward, it took 10 years or 20 years in the month. So, I think if I'm correct, the city manager, you can kind of address those in negotiations at this point. I mean, the council doesn't have to act on it, but that would be some of my concerns. But welcome to the community and the job. I'm in favor of this, so unless anybody else has got any more comments, we'll have a vote. Go ahead, Jeff.
I just have one.
Okay, let me go to Councilman Guard, and I'll go to the online.
Sounds good. I'm wholeheartedly in favor of this project. I think we're getting way far off in the weeds on everything. If you read this whole contract here, we've got performance standards in it, so they have, for the lease to carry out for the 10 years, they have to produce with it, so that covers whether they can afford to do it or not. We've got pollution controls in here for doing that. We don't have to set up and say we're going to fly in an inspector in once a year and do all this stuff. I mean, everything we're talking about here is business dealing stuff we're talking about doing. We have a very good contract here. A contract should be well-written, but it should also have some flexibility in it, and the further and further into the weeds we go with this, the more and more we tie everybody's hands. I'm in favor of doing it as is, getting it done and doing it.
Okay, Councilman Jones?
Yeah, there's just a typo on page four of the lease under lease term two A, it says lease, the term of this lease should be five, 10 years, should strike the word five, and it should just be 10 years, I believe, so wanted to point that out before we go forward.
And the city clerk picked that up.
This is a very much a draft and will be finalized through negotiations, so we will catch a lot of stuff.
This is the final lease.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, we're passing a resolution tonight authorizing you to execute the lease.
Oh, I thought this was to be notion, excuse me.
No, they, this has been going on since March of last year. It's unfortunately been drug out due to, like, the land disposals have approved March of last year, and they got drug out with Lee leaving and coming out, getting caught in speed, and then the Blackwater fire and a bunch of other stuff, so, yeah, we're finally getting to the end of this one. Yeah.
So, we can't make small administrative changes in this, like straighten the five?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, yeah, that's, yeah, we don't need to send it back to legal for legal on that.
Okay. Okay, is there anything else? Okay, I'm going to make one more comment. This is probably more for the benefit of the applicant. The reason I bring up some of these questions and others is we've heard these development plans before. We have a lot down here that was supposed to get a building that now has Conexes on it. We have another lot down here that's supposed to be a building that's now a parking lot. We have another lot down in the south, Northville, that's basically a junkyard, and they were all good people, they're all going to do X, Y, and Z, they all had timelines, and it didn't happen. So, I think we're representing the community and make sure we want you to be successful, but we need to put these little stopwags in there to make sure of that, and so we wish you the best of luck. So, with that, that would, what we want to do, I guess, a first vote, right?
Roll call.
Roll call, thank you. Roll call, please.
Okay, on the lease, Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
Yes.
Jeff Guard?
Yes.
Kristen Carpenter? Tom Baylor?
Yes.
Malina Meyer? Ann Shaker?
Yes.
Resolution passes? Six zero.
Andy, really should have other people talking on this.
Yeah, he did.
All right, that leaves us where?
He was second right after me.
Pending agenda. CFP list, down events, any comments on that, on page 32? Oh, sorry, I'm listening. Go ahead, City Manager.
I want to let you know that at our next council meeting, we will have our fiscal year '21 audit presented by our auditors, and we'll have those documents ready as a precursor to the budget conversation that will happen very soon. So, the next meeting will be a presentation of the audit.
Anything online? Okay, we'll move on to audience participation.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I've actually got something.
Go ahead.
Didn't get to the mute button in time.
Sorry.
So, I was, yeah, just want to make sure we get the future work session for housing on the pending agenda, maybe up to the line, or not seeing it on here. I thought we talked about that last meeting.
We did. Was it on there? I did not see it.
Yeah, so I know we talked about it last time for like a January, you know, do a January work session or something, whenever works for staff, I know they've got a big, you know, well-living big ask going into the session here, so.
Okay, both staff are taking notes and taking their headshots.
It's on the, it's on here.
It's upcoming.
Thirty-five, it's number seven, under section C.
Those are up. How many meetings on the agenda?
On page 35.
Thirty-three.
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 It's number seven, right?
Yes, January 23rd.
Oh, yeah, C7.
Ah, all the way down to the bottom, there you go. That's where we can see it. Very good.
Okay, yeah, I see it, those, yeah, I guess didn't quite get everything on that what I wanted to see, but yeah, maybe we could put a slash work session, it's not just a discussion.
It says...
Yeah, it's a council work session.
For housing, not just for investment, but yeah, thanks.
Yeah, I believe it says council work session about housing shortage progress, staff has made work solutions, January 23rd.
And it's C7, not A7.
Yeah, C7.
I didn't see that, thanks.
Yeah, I didn't see it either. Okay, is there anything else? Nobody's participation. I've got 15 minutes to make a record here. Council comments. Go to the phone, Malina?
Um, yeah, thanks for the short meeting, and I am in favor of this business. I just had problems with that lease, and I didn't have a clear picture of how it was going to be carried out, and just kind of wanted more information before locking up into a lease, but moving forward, I really hope all those comments and concerns that everybody brought up gets addressed and we get some kind of update on the harbor expansions, really the land expansions of the harbor for our fleet, the Northville, the shipyard. It's exciting to get some of those things going and in full support of the industry and doing what we can, so, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Carpenter?
Yeah, I don't have anything to add, and thanks for the discussion tonight.
Okay, Ken Jones?
Thanks, everybody, for coming out. It's great to see you for participation.
Jeff? Thanks to staff for everything, and thank you, everybody, and John.
Anne?
Yeah, thanks to staff for the great work.
All right, you're on table there.
Well, I'm pretty excited about the Cassell training for the staff. They've been asking for that for years and years and years and years since we switched to Cassell, so that's pretty exciting, and I think it has a lot more potential than ever before. whatever.